Morning, everybody. We're starting our meeting with the pleasure of allegiance. Uh, I'll have Pat Conway. Sorry about that guy.
Sorry about that.
One of these. Gotcha covered. All right. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, for attendance in the room, we have Alison McFosby, we have Commissioner Coyle, Commissioner Gado, Leila, and we have Chuck, uh, myself, and in Zoom, we have, uh, let's see. In August, we get Catherine Mann from Sheriff's Office, we have Pat Conway, uh, and we have another member, Tom Tomorello. I think I got everybody so far, and I'm sure all the people will pop in as we go along. So let's start with our openings. Computer equipment facilities.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate their proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Sir. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? There's none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening for laundry equipment preventative maintenance service contract.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facility Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? And hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're onto the consent agenda.
I move to approve the August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, public and non-public meeting minutes, and the September seventh, public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Is there any additions or fractions of the minutes? Hearing none on taking motion on the minutes, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
I vote yes. Payroll.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-nine cents for the period ending September ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Chuck, we're a little lower than we've been.
We've had some extra stuff in some of the recent ones, such as we had like some of the motivate me payoffs that happened. Then obviously, back, I think, the first payroll in August, we had like the earned time holiday cash outs that resulted in a pretty good size spike. So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's nice too when we.
She's kind of back to normal.
Yeah, and we also didn't have any separations or retirements because times when the, when the individuals go to switching status, like they're gonna stay on this per diem, they can't work for twenty-eight days, but they get transitioned to per diem, there's no like immediate payout of unused PTO, it just happens to regular payroll. We didn't have any of that this time too, so.
Excellent. Thank you for that. I wasn't aware if you were like seeing a.
Now.
You know, that's good.
It was like the first one like getting more back to normal, I guess you could say.
Further discussion? Uh, if not on the motion, Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Now, for the record, we have Jason Smith, who's come in, we have Jason Henry, we have Sheriff Santos, um, and we have Jude Gates. And so. We're on to, um, attorney reports. I'll, I'll go with, then I'm just gonna turn to your foil.
Sure. Things are busy. They knew there. Um, I think Kevin's comment the last time was, um, you know, will someone say they're not busy, but I think that in response to that, everybody is always, you know, there's a lot of work constantly happening at, um, at the county, and that's a tribute to everyone's hard work. Um, the population at the jail is a hundred and fifty-three. Uh, last night, we did have an incident where a, um, a staff member was assaulted, struck across the face. Um, he's okay, but, um, you know, this is the work of, the challenging work that correctional officers face. On the, um, positive note, we've had a lot of new applicants, which is really great. Tomorrow is the academy graduation, and we have one that graduating, so, um, and also lots of projects ongoing. The shower project's still going well. Um, overall, we have, uh, six new women coming on board with the, um, work, so that's exciting. It's nice to get that diversity. Things are going well. Over at assisted living, uh, today is the twentieth anniversary celebration of the Ernest Barker Assistant Living Facility, so there's going to be a celebration in this afternoon. Um, so that's, that's nice. Um, and some of the residents are gonna be given awards, so that's also really great. Um, the new restorative program manager started this week, so that's great to get that up and running. And, um, a special shout out to Jason, who got awarded the New Hampshire Business Review Business Excellence Award.
Wow.
Very happy to, uh, you're a, um, very, uh.
Popular guy.
Well, yeah, worthy of, worthy recipient, so, um, congratulations. Uh, there'll be a celebration of, uh, the award recipients next month. And finance, um, they are franking away. I will, and Chuck will expand on that in further.
Very good. Commissioner Gado?
Uh, we had a meeting on the, um, work towards daycare and discussion about, uh, facility and requirements and, um, it was a productive meeting, and we're, we're moving forward with this, uh, investigation. I think that it's going well. And I'm really pleased with, uh, both Allison and Jason's input into it. It's very thoughtful and, um, think that we're moving forward well.
Good. Okay, so for me, um, who do I want to start? So, uh, with, with Jude, uh, I met with, I actually came in yesterday, um, met with Jude to, um, look at the paperwork for the easement. The easement's already crafted by, um, attorney, um, I think it's, what's his name? Bedard? Attorney Bedard. So we have that, um, and as you may recall, you know, we are looking at, uh, tapping some butters for their wells. We're gonna do an outreach to them to see if they so choose to have us look at their, their well system and, um, so that's, that's gonna be happening soon. Um, and then, once we get that clarified, we'll reach out to the neighbor that actually would really need the easement, um, give her, you know, talk to her and see if, um, she could give us that easement, and then, uh, you know, we'll, we'll be off to the races with that. Um, I did meet with the sheriff's office yesterday, um, with impressive group of people. We had the major there, we had, um, Sawyer, we had, uh, uh, the, the sheriff, and we also had, um, from the delegation, we had Scott Wallace. So what it is, is basically, uh, some of the smaller towns, the fire departments are going to their state reps to ask them to ask county commissioners to pay for radios, signal radios and whatnot, and, uh, you know, so right off the bat, uh, we had mentioned that it's impossible to do even think about this year because we're already in the budget. Uh, but we should probably do our due diligence, um, to find out what that cost would be. Uh, and to basically put out a survey to the, the towns, let's see, you know, what, what their expectations are. Uh, and then get back to that maybe a year from now, but nothing, you know, we have plenty of time on that, um, to see which direction the commissioners want to go. But anyway, um, and by the way, when I did come yesterday, it was really interesting to see that, um, the assisted living facility, they had, because they're, they're having celebrations all week.
Yeah.
And so they had like a little, um, petting zoo type thing. Um, so I made my way over because they really seemed really happy and smiling, and so I walked over to see the pig, the ducks, a couple of goats, one was outside of the pen, and he was just doing his thing, but everybody was all smiles. The sun was out, and it was great, great. It's good to see. So. Uh, that's it for me. Um, let's move on to the upper grant application payout review and work and discussion. Who wants to bring me that?
Well, I don't think we have done, was there something for that we discussed?
Well, we had, we had discussed, uh, possibly looking at some more of the, uh, grant applications, but I don't know if we were specific.
About where we wanna.
Right. There's, I think there were two business ones that were still on there. I think two, two restaurants, basically. I think one from Salem, one from East Terry, I believe. So that's the expenditure category two point three five. And then I think there's just a, there's a handful of, um, those nonprofits that are essentially asking for a sub award. Yeah, to enhance services, those communities disproportionately affected by COVID. I wish I could give a nice, clean expenditure category, but, uh, there's a final, final version of the treasury rule. They kind of broke them all up amongst many different ones.
Okay, so which ones specifically are new?
So on two point three five, which is just the, the one sheet, it says the last two at the bottom, so Tokyo Japanese Steakhouse and East Terry Tavern. Uh, those are the two ones for the local business assistance for hospitality industry.
I, um, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we were doing this. I didn't, I haven't reviewed the full application, so my concern is that it just, in terms of their adverse impact and COVID.
Do you want to push it out?
I haven't, I don't know. Have you guys reviewed the full application?
Definitely. I, I, I'd like to identify specifically which ones we're going to consider next time, and then I'll have, then I think we have an, I'll have an opportunity to really look at those specifically rather than just give it a glance.
Just push it out.
Okay. So just the remaining ones from those two groups, basically the.
Those two, yeah.
Yeah, the two business, local business ones, and then the other, I think it's, uh, one, two, three.
Yeah.
You sort of back in this week.
Yeah, and if you want to, we did have, I think, a couple more that came in that I need to add or have Emily add to the sheet that were, I think they might have been, um, one additional nonprofit financial assistance and one or two, I think.
Subrecipient.
Subrecipient ones. So I can get those added in the meantime if you want.
That'd be great.
You got the backup for those for us?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll get it.
I, I would suggest, so next, just to clarify, so next week, we're gonna take on, we'll look at the two new, um, had two applications under two point three five, as well as all the, um, all of the new applications for the subrecipients.
Okay.
Yes, but I'd like to find them on the sheet so that I can be sure which ones were.
So that's quite an updated, isn't it?
What I could use on, on this version coming up, I could make like a definite like color code all the way to left, like green or whatever, these are the ones to look at, if that would work.
I, I, just a list of, of the ones that we're going to consider would be helpful to me.
Okay, I can put that in the body of an email to Leila as far as.
Yeah, here are the ones we're looking at next week that are new, and then we'll, we'll grab all the paperwork on that.
I actually really appreciated this spreadsheet.
Yeah. Unfortunately, they, it just keeps on growing.
Yeah, yeah, well, understandable.
Getting larger.
Let's move on to, uh, the plan of the correction, need to defense and indemnification request, uh, in H, RSA twenty-nine, eight-two.
I move to approve the defense and indemnification for Jason Henry, Superintendent of the Department of Corrections, and officers Jeffrey Pelchat, Drew Long, Matthew Brown, John Colcraft, Priscilla Casomero, and any individual employees that may be named later under John and Jane Does pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty dash A, colon, two in legal matters relating to demand, a demand letter dated July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Sir, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
It's pretty clear from the statutorys, being that.
So on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Is your exact?
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care, uh, line item transfer.
I move to approve a line item transfer request and we have a ten thousand, sixty-seven dollars dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three, transferring from equipment expendable to equipment non-expendable as designated by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Is there discussion?
Um, so. Um, and I'm gonna talk about it in the context of the, the bid waiver, but it's tied into this, but we are getting, essentially, we're getting four lifts. Is that correct? Two of the five hundred, two of the four hundred?
Correct, and, and, um, they are under the five thousand dollars, except when you add in the shipping and the fee for delivery, that's what bumped up two of the lifts over the five thousand dollars, and that is what's.
Okay, there's like seventeen hundred bucks in delivery fees or something of that nature. Okay. Then my question is, are, when you were budgeting, how many did you buy it? Because it seems like the amount that you're transferring from expendable to non-expendable only covers two. Were you intending to, um, only buy two, or is it that they were, that you anticipated the other two being in above ten thousand? So, okay, Chuck.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, I appreciate this.
So, so what happened was, so, so these were all budgeted for, but, um, the freight was an individual component that was like under expendable, but when you divide it up between the four pieces, two of them went over five thousand.
Yes.
By definition, that goes to a different expense line.
Right.
But all four, actually, there's another one, I think, that's budgeted for, does not purchase this time.
Yeah.
Uh, were budgeted under expendable, so since in the end, they're actually gonna be above five thousand, has to go to non-expendable.
Right.
But since the freight was a separate component to itself, not allocated to one of the pieces, we have the total dollars budgeted for. Just needs to go to a different line.
Yes.
So that's all.
Okay. That's kind of what I thought, but.
Yeah, so it's like not, not necessarily a bad news trend for per se, because all the money really was budgeted for. Just has to go somewhere else because of how we define the, the expense lines, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, decisionary request, EZ Way.
I move to approve the EZ Way Incorporated quote and bid waiver request in the amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents for the purchase of four of the devices as recommended by Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sheriff's Office, Law Enforcement Substance Abuse Reduction Initiative Grant.
I move to approve the Law Enforcement Substance Abuse Reduction Initiative Grant Agreement in the amount of forty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the high sheriff.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Foyle?
Couple things. One, thank you, Sheriff, for, uh, Catherine, um, for sending over the MO, MOAs that was very helpful. I have two considerations, and just wanted to bring this up with respect to the MOA. And one is, um, sort of the indemnification part about the municipalities, are they gonna indemnify us for anything that occurs? It's not spelled out. And then the other thing is the way this grant is structured, it's a little weird because, um, the, it seems like the state is paying the municipalities directly, but then there's an approval process by the county. So then, what do we do? Like, how are we gonna adjudicate if there is a, um, disagreement or, um, you know, a not meeting of the minds in terms of payment?
Well, I think any, anything that they can submit for has to be authorized by us because it has to have a direct correlation to cases that fall under this. So I, I mean, how many years have we been doing this, Catherine, that I don't think we've ever had?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think anyone's ever disagreed with what, because in order, in order to go out and work it, there has to be an approved case that's being, uh, being overseen by us, uh, in our task force under that. So they can't just go out and work Granite Shield without our authority and say, we're gonna submit for it.
Okay, and then the indemnification part?
Yeah, I guess I, I, can you clarify exactly more which, you know, what, I mean, are you, the indemnification as far as the payment? Or the indemnification as far as the participation?
Participation.
Um, I mean, I guess because it's one of those weird nuances, and that's why, you know, I kind of touched on it last time. That's why we have to swear them in as deputies. So, you know, they're, they're operating as a deputy sheriff to maintain those jurisdictional issues because some other people have tried to do some regional drug task force under the, uh, county's, you know, emergency MOU, and it doesn't cover them for that sort of stuff, uh, for emergency mutual aid. Uh, and that's why we, that's why we do the regional, and that's why we swear them in fully as deputies in order to participate in the program.
Okay, so, do we have, and I mean, this opens up the next question, and I'm sorry if I, I'm not aware, but do we have, is there an indemnification? Like, when you swear in officers as deputies for purposes of some of this, uh, this task force initiative, how does that work in terms of liability? Say, oh, say there's a workers' comp claim, while they're an, you know, officer of, uh, Epping, they're on the task force.
And it's, it's whoever's paying them pays the workers' comp claim, and that's why it's better that this grant actually pays the communities directly. So, like, when we swear in a deputy, we actually have to fill out, even when they're just part-time, you know, as a task force officer, and they're not a, a complete pick, you know, because we have some part-time deputies that are on the county's payroll, knowing another that are sworn, but we still even have to fill out form Bs, uh, or Form As with the, uh, police standards and training, and we have to get copies of all their training records and all that other stuff, so. But it comes down to when they're, because they're getting paid by their local communities and their towns authorize them to be there, they, they're always responsible for, uh, like, workers' comp claims, so it doesn't become the county's issue.
Okay.
Further comments?
So you're, I guess, have you guys, the last thing I'm gonna ask just with respect to the MOU is, did we talk to legal just about having some sort of blanket indemnification in the same way the state requires us to indemnify them?
I don't think so, because I don't think this is really any different than kind of the countywide mutual aid MOUs that get done through the county attorney's office under that, but I think it's kind of a, it's, it's really seems to be a non-issue that's never brought itself to attention. Uh, so I, I don't think there's been any history of any case where anything's ever been challenged in between the partnerships, uh, throughout the county for normal mutual aid, or, I mean, I've never heard of a task force, anything coming up with any of us.
Further comments? Yep. If none, um, we'll, we'll go to the motion. On the motion, Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Some every. I, I understand, I'm just like, there. That indemnification part, just like, it's just like, concerns me a little. Um, so I'm gonna abstain from this vote.
Okay, I'm gonna vote yes. So, two zero, uh, two zero one. One section. Okay, so now we're on to department head updates, ready, which is great, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with Sheriff first, so, Sheriff, you're up.
Uh, good morning. Um, nothing really new to report, and we are going into a non-public meeting, and I'm gonna ask that if we can go first, because, uh, the major and I have a meeting at ten-thirty. Another meeting at ten-thirty. Uh, we did have a deputy resign the other day.
No, dispatcher.
Dispatcher resigned, and, um, but we, on the good note is, we have some, we're doing some good backgrounds on, on, on a lot of people, so that's, that's pretty awesome. Otherwise than that, just status quo. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Um, I'm gonna go with, uh, Pat Conway, which we. It's good to see you today, Pat. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Uh, good to see everybody as well. Um, things are going pretty well here. Um, we are short legal assistants, so we are, um, interviewing people for those positions, and Autumn has been a big help over at HR in doing that. She's been making calls for us just to, to do an initial screening of the candidates, which again has been really helpful, saving us some time in the, uh, screening out people that just, you know, won't work in the first instance. Um, I wanted to let everybody know that, uh, the Attorney General holds a conference every year regarding domestic violence and sexual assault and investigations and that kind of thing, and we typically attend. They also give out an award. It's, uh, the Sandy Matheson Award. Um, Sandy Matheson was the person who started the victim advocacy program at the Attorney General's office and sort of started the whole, um, concept essentially of victim advocacy and prosecutorial offices, and they, um, started an award on her behalf, I think it was in two thousand and thirteen. It's a big honor to receive the award. They, like I said, they give it out every year at this conference, and, uh, we nominated, uh, Kate Winter, who is a victim advocate here, and she received the, the award. For all of her great work. She really is, um, just a wonderful, a victim witness advocate. She goes above and beyond, and the Attorney General's Office recognized that. They get tons of nominations each year, so I'm really, really proud of her. Uh, myself and the Deputy County Attorney were able to make that presentation up at the, um, up at the conference, so that was pretty awesome. Um, so that's really great. Uh, yesterday, we had CLM come in and, and do a presentation for, for all my staff here regarding their rapid response mobile crisis team. Um, I've seen the presentation at one of the chief's meetings a while ago, but I thought that would be beneficial to our staff, especially victim advocates who work with victims who sometimes experience mental health crisis, uh, so that was helpful. Um, also, we're doing a forum for, um, I'll be holding a felonies first forum on October thirteenth just to have a discussion, roundtable discussion with all the, the law enforcement agencies in Rockingham County, uh, because on January first, two thousand and twenty-four, the way that we handle felonies will change in that, uh, they will be filed in the first instance in circuit court rather than superior court, um, which is a big deal, um, for, for folks who work in our area. It's a big deal. It just changes things a lot. So we'll be discussing how that's gonna affect our relationship, and just want to make sure that we're handling everything efficiently so we continue to provide, um, good services to the citizens of our county and more specifically the victims of, of crimes. Um, so that's on October thirteenth at nine o'clock at the Hilton Auditorium, and we've already got a really great response back from police chiefs and circuit court prosecutors, so I'm hopeful that that will be a great discussion, um, in moving forward productively. So, um, in terms of me attending the meetings, I'm sorry, I'm not, I haven't been here religiously every, every week. Um, on September twenty-fifth, I start a dou- double negligent homicide trial. It's a two-week trial, starts November, I'm sorry, September twenty-fifth. Um, I know I talked with you a little bit about a medical issue I'm having. I had to move that, uh, procedure up to October seventeenth. So just so you all know, I'm probably gonna be on leave from October seventeenth through, um, October thirty-first. Um, but I'll be available via cell phone and email. I'm sure I'll be doing some work from home. Um, so, but other than that, that's what's going on here at the county attorney's office.
Thanks, but I appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna go to Jude Gates.
Good morning, everyone. Um, all is well in engineering and maintenance. I'm really happy to announce that, um, Autumn extended an offer to a no motor services mechanic, and he has accepted, so for the first time, that posting was since July a year ago. So, um, we have somebody new coming on board. I'm very excited about it. Jimmy's very excited about it because he's totally carried over there. Um, it's really good news, and it brings us down to six openings, but, you know, it's still hopeful. Oh, sorry about my clock. Sorry, my clock, it's my clock.
Earned.
No, but what is it? What's making that noise? Oh, okay.
Other than that, um, you know, as you re, let everybody know, Commissioner, we're working hard on the new building. Um, they did set putting some pipe in the ground this week, underground sewage for the, um, back section, the corrections area, so. Things are looking up. It's very exciting. Um, we have some comments back from New Hampshire DOT regarding the driveway and closing off up here. We're waiting to see where that's gonna go. They've asked for additional information, which we're pulling together, and, um, we're waiting for the, the last of it to come together on asking the neighbors if they want us to test their wells. All's well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jason Henry?
Morning. Good morning. Uh, a couple things, uh, felonies first, just to remind you that probably the jail will, will see an uptick. You know, that was about, what I understand at Rockingham, about almost seventy-five inmates that went to felonies first, who are not housed inside of here. So you'll probably see an uptick with that because they're gonna be bound over for ninety days, so our population's gonna go up with that after the beginning of the year at some point. I forwarded an article to you guys from, uh, New Hampshire Bulletin. They did an article on jail costs, especially medication costs, medical costs, because the state prison asks the state for an extra almost six million dollars in their medical or staffing and, and other medical costs. Um, and it's a good article because they've seen that significantly all the jails have gone up exponentially on, from team mental health, um, that we've spent money on medications, hospitals, all kind of good stuff, so it's a good article of what we're dealing with. Yeah, the one-twentieth Academy does graduate tomorrow, then a week after that, the one-twenty-oneth Academy will start, we're sending two people to that. Um, also, I sent most, I think, all the, uh, the commissioners and department heads a House bill, uh, to. A House Bill two-three-two, which is the OSHA bill, where they want municipalities and counties to follow. All sections from D to Z, which is hundreds of things in there. And I've probably been on testify next week, because they're looking for somebody to help represent. David Ross, one of the county nursing administrators going. Well, I understand, he's saying if we had to implement these things, even just at the nursing home level, it would take a year, a year and a half to be able to implement and be able to afford. What you need to get done.
I'm sorry, Jason, is that?
HB two-three-two, I sent, and I sent it to you, I believe I sent it to you in an email as well.
Okay.
It could have significant impact, reference things that we have to do, so if anybody has any. Comments or concerns, it'd be great if you sent to me, I'll probably go down next week on the twenty-first. I'll have Major Banfield do the commissioner meeting instead, so I can go down there and testify that. The impact that could have on the counties, and it could be significant, I know that, you know, I talked to Jude a little bit. She's looking at that, it's just a lot of stuff that could impact us. And that's all I got.
So Jason, is that a new bill or is that an old bill in study?
New.
It's a bill on request of the study committee established in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you, appreciate that, Jason Smith.
Good morning, Commissioners, just to follow up. We have our ceremony later today in celebration of our twenty years, we've been having events all week, as Commissioner Cheryl mentioned. We've had our little animal festival out front yesterday. Willow the pig was enjoying all the apples on the ground, and Sally and Frank, who were the goats, were great. Frank ran away, we had to go get him, but that was fun, anyway, the residents enjoyed it. We had.
What happened to Tom?
It was actually quite funny, though, the chickens ran out of the pen, and the ducks ran out, it was quite hilarious, actually. Anyway. Nonetheless, we also hosted About Town Network Group, this is the. Area network that Jessica Wendell, Public Relations Community Outreach Manager participates, it's for Northern Massachusetts and Southern New Hampshire. It's one of the groups that she is a member of, it was the first time that this group actually came on site, and they provided tours of our assisted living community. And also the nursing home, so we had about, I think around thirty-five people participate, which was really nice. From outside stakeholders, in addition, as Commissioner Coyle mentioned, our new restorative manager, Jessica Roy, started this week. So we're really happy to have her come on board, and we also have another PTA that will be starting in a few weeks. That will be complementing Jessica and the services that are offered in the restorative program. In my board packet, I provided the commissioners with our updated employee newsletter for your review. In addition to that, we also will be hosting an hour Come Learn With Us education series that we have every quarter. On October fifth, from four to five, for family members and staff, we'll be hosting an information session on hospice. And how to care for not only the patient, but also the caregiver during that time, so we're happy to be hosting that, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Hi, good morning, our occupational health office is back open today, she's on site, we had to close it. Due to unforeseen circumstances, but she is there, so feel free to go and send your folks over there if you need to. We have our last supervisors anti-discrimination and harassment training that's going on this morning. And the employee anti-discrimination harassment series will start next Monday on the eighteenth of September. House bill, like Jason is talking about, I am not able to return that due to other things going on. But from a HR perspective, where OSHA really kind of sits, Sarah Luca is going on our behalf. And she will be testifying based on other counties as well, we're putting a packet together for her. And she'll be there to represent the counties as far as the HR perspective, because usually OSHA falls under HR. And then all the stuff pushes down to the different departments, so we're putting stuff together, she's done an outreach to all of our county affiliate groups. To ask them for information as well, so Jason, you and Sarah certainly will have the floor on that day, and I appreciate that. So that is what we have going on, we are, we signed the agreement for the years of service event. And the NHAC award recipients, we're working on some other things coming up. That will be for Thanksgiving and Christmas, like during the holiday, that we usually do on behalf of the board, like the, you know. Letters or postcards or whatever that we're doing, and we have some other things that we'll be talking in non-public about that have come up. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Allison.
Let's see, payroll went fairly smoothly, so some people start seeing some direct deposits in their account. You know, earlier than usual, that might be why. It's usually up to the credit unions, if they want to get that advanced credit, it was sooner than the actual payday. We should be on the verge of getting our official town tax apportionment. And the numbers I provided Leila to disperse out to the commissioners were right on, there was this one dollar rounding. And and I was told by our DRA advisor that will go to the town of Southampton, which I think has the lowest aggregate dollar. Amount, I guess how they do it is, if there's a rounding up, it goes to the one with the lowest, I guess, aggregate apportionment dollar amount. And then if there's one, they're rounding down, it goes to the one that has the highest, and that would be portioned by this. Yeah, so so we're about to to get that analysis, I even gave like. The different swings and how each individual community was, you know, affected. Again, it's based upon the change in the, or their portion of the equalized value. From the survey that DRA does in comparison to their percentage of the overall, you know, modified equalized value. So it's out of our hands as far as how that's actually calculated to the town, wheeling. You know, commissioner approves, delegation approves, the aggregate tax amount.
Well, that was very super accurate.
Yeah, yeah, and actually our DRA advisor came back, and they said, oh, we have a dollar rounding, and she's like, yeah, it's gonna be Southampton, I'm like, okay. As usual, audits keep on continuing, it appears that things are going very well in the Medicaid cost per audit, so that's good. Because that's the first deadline coming up, November thirtieth will be that Medicare cost per deadline. The audit is finished with one of the single audits, now they're moving on to the next one. And we do continue to try to push them to speed things up.
They bombarded you with B-Docs, which I didn't know if it was a scam.
Well, what happened was, they didn't go back, once Markham took over effective January first. That's when they should have sent around updates, engagement letters, just to, again, no change in costs, no change in the terms, but. It's basically, they had to do it, you know, with Markham being the name, not not Mulanston anymore, so that's when they should have done it back then. But, no changing pricing, and they'd be breaching the contract if they were to do that, so. But yeah, just overall, busy, but things are are going well.
Very good, thank you, Chuck. I'm gonna go to Leila.
So my WordPress move can't class was changed, so we, I I switched the October fifth meeting back to a regular meeting. But now it's gonna be changed to October four, and the day before, due to other reasons.
And is that going to be a regular meeting or a?
A regular meeting, so, yes, I can clarify. Yeah, I I am not available on the, or I can be remote, I said Commissioner. Godu and I are both gonna be, need to be remote on the fifth, but I can be in person on the fourth, so that's the basis for the changes.
Yeah, because you have to have two commissioners present in order to have a meeting, so. We bumped, we moved the meeting to a common extent.
We could make that a brief meeting, so, so we're not gonna be here.
Oh, I'm gonna be in person on the. Because we need to have two in-person for the forum.
So Leila, is there a message that you want to let anybody know?
I expect another change of meeting. So that brings me to the next thing, so October nineteenth, we'll have to make that one an only. Meeting, does that work for all of you?
Thank you, Leila.
Thank you, there was a, the finance office has been receiving a lot of phone calls lately about a tax lien. Letter that the residents have been receiving, so they finally got someone to to scan it and email it in. So we can take a look at it, and so it's it's totally a scam, the sheriff's office has been notified, I believe. I believe you guys notified Kathy Stacey as well. Yeah, and it did post something on the finance office.
There's a county tax lien on.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, and to call this number and arrange like payments, and it's very similar to something I think that was done back. A handful of years ago, that IRS.gov actually ended up posting about.
The scary part is, they're trying to scam people for like upwards to ninety-five hundred dollars, which is significant. And very cruel, especially the scene is at fall prime, I think that, but anyway. I think we all. We're all notified of that.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah, so I'm gonna get a phone call, send it to the finance office.
Yeah, the publication, you know, the the notice has actually had a new logo for Rockingham County too.
Yeah, yeah, I wonder, maybe the sheriffs, do you think we could do a press release or do something on the sheriff's web? Like Facebook or?
I think they posted it on their Facebook page.
Yeah, we, yeah, we did do a social media posting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I am working on the postage meter art thing, because our lease expires in November, so.
Busy.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I think that's it, thank you.
Very good, alright, so we're gonna move on, I didn't bring anything. We're gonna move on to new business, old business, anybody? So we're gonna move on to public comment, anybody from the public wish to speak? Yes.
Morning, everybody, I'd like to know, is there any minutes being taken for the meetings that are being conducted for the child daycare? In that committee?
I believe that there are.
Yeah.
Minutes that have been taken.
The minutes are being taken each week. And we can turn those over to Leila to determine if they want to post them somewhere on behalf of the board of commissioners.
Yeah, I think we should, if you can hand those over to Leila, and then we can, Tom, we can get you, notify you that when those are ready.
Okay. Yeah, if I could just make a comment on it, I know I'm the public.
Yeah, go ahead.
Years ago, when I was there, I mean, I would say that the daycare for the children was a money pit and benefited few employees, so. I'm hoping the group is taking a good look at it, and I would just keep in mind. The relationship when adult medical daycare was closed, the relationship with the delegation was at an all-time low. And I can still see and picture the late Mary Griffin, Representative Grit Griffin. Asking for resolution for many years for the commissioners to be instructed to open adult medical daycare. Lo and behold, Commissioner Kevin Coyle came up with a great idea to offset it by giving money to five groups, now there's three. Because two have gone out of business, and actually one isn't even in the county, but they do get some Rockingham residents. I just hope that the group is really looking at that, because I think it's gonna be a slippery slope with the delegation, when you folks open up. And I'm I'm the public, so you guys can open it, and the future will be the future, but I'm just hoping there's a lot of work, but history will show. That was a money pit and benefited few employees. So that's that's my comment, and we'll see where we go, you guys go.
I'd just like to address it.
You have something briefly you want to talk about?
As we're looking at these, the issues, we recognize that there was a failed. Attempt that was a money pit previously, and this is being looked at in a completely different light. And than what was done before, we were talking with other groups that have successfully accomplished this. It would not be exclusively for the county, although, I mean, no decisions have been made, but the prevailing. Thought on what's happening is that it would not be exclusive to the county, there'd be an outside agency that would actually. Run the operation, it would be our position to. Support that and 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 help it run, but we're well aware of of what happened previously. And looking to avoid all of those pitfalls, and it's a lot of good work that's being done to make sure that. What might be proposed is not a repeat of what happened previously.
So just to wrap that up.
I was just gonna say, I think former Commissioner Conroe lots of, offers a lot of history on these issues. Both from a political climate, you know, the the, especially since the delegation is going to be approving our budget. And that, you know, I appreciate your input and advice, and I understand, I remember the days of. The adult medical daycare issues, and I think it's well, you know, we should heed what he's saying pretty significantly because of the cost. You know, if we are bringing in and putting money towards daycare and and still not, you know, and not. Considering adult medical daycare, where we've already crossed that path, I think we need to. Heed his, or listen to what he's saying carefully, consider, careful consideration.
And I just, I guess I'll chime, I wasn't planning on chiming in, but I just want to obviously mention something very quickly. Tom Tomberall mentioned the former Commissioner Kevin Coyle, which was a controversial issue at the time. But Commissioner Coyle, Kevin Coyle at the time. Made it known that he didn't feel comfortable that government should be be with private sector. And as Tom Tomberall mentioned, it was very controversial at the time, but it seemed to, it seemed to work. It evened out, and it worked, so. To to his credit, he he thought that was the way to go, and it seemed to work out, but anyway. Alright, so what we're gonna do is, I'll have Allison, can you send the minutes over to. Leila, and then Leila, can you share, because I haven't seen any minutes, I don't believe Commissioner Coyle has.
No.
We'd like to see those too, see with that discussion, how many times did you guys meet? Okay, so there shouldn't be a lot of stuff.
No, it just kind of formulates what our agenda items were in the discussion.
Perfect, thank you, anybody else from the public? There were none, we're going to end the meeting, we're going to non-public, so.
I moved to enter into non-public, person to ninety-one A, full and read to personnel matter, and write the sheriff's department first, because I know they have to be.
Okay, motions been made to non-public and seconded, all those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, alright, thank you, everybody, we appreciate your input, have a good day. Alright, do we need, anyone need a, up on a break? I went back in session, and Commissioner Coyle has a motion to go.
So we had a number of non-public sessions, the first issue that we addressed and the last issue. We addressed, I moved to seal the minutes related to those two indefinitely. Because it affects the reputation of a individual other than this board.
Sorry. First and last discussion, seconded, all those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
I had to do a roll call.
And with that, I move to adjourn.
Sorry. Those two adjourn, all those in favor to say aye? Okay, we are adjourned.